Good evening and welcome to the Brockton School Committee Finance Subcommittee Meeting. Today is Tuesday, November 19th, 5:30 PM. We are located at the Dr. William Arnold Theater at 135 Belmont Street here in Brockton. This meeting will be held and will be accessible to the public via Comcast Channel 8 and 107.1 HD version and online via the sling, www.youtube.com/thebrocktonchannels. Today's agenda will call this meeting to order. Mrs. Sullivan.
Yeah.
Mr. Vega.
Here.
Mr. Gomes.
Here.
Ms. Oliver.
Here.
Chairman Mayor Sullivan.
Here.
Miss Azak.
Here.
Mr. Sullivan.
Here.
Tony Rodriguez as the Vice Chair is present and also with the Superintendent, Mrs. Tellegheny.
Doctor.
Let me start, Mr. Doctor. We establish a quorum. Today's agenda is discussion of Schedule 19.
Vice Chair, if I could just one second, let me check the cable. I just got two texts that there's no volume on the TV. Is there a way to check that, please, Mike? Thank you.
Thank you. Today's discussion is on Schedule 19 and I will hand the floor over to the Superintendent and I believe she has a presentation for all of us.
This one. Oh, heal me. This one. Okay, thank you. So, good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for being here. So, more than, it's not really a slide deck, or a presentation, it's just one slide. So, today I wanted to just give you an update on where we are with Schedule 19. At our December 3rd meeting, we will have a more in-depth dive into the Schedule 19 itself. But I did want to at least give you an update on where we are in collaboration with the city.
Can I have a few in-class to be at today's open, please? Thank you.
And thinking about what our end-of-year report is and what our net school spending carryover amount is. So, I know that one of the things that we're very interested, as we talk about Schedule 19, is what that means for our net school spending carryover. And I do want to thank the city. We've been working very diligently with them to kind of reconcile these numbers. And even though there are still areas where we would like to improve, I think that what we are presenting today shows a huge amount of progress since our very first meeting. So, here what you'll see is sort of our net school spending snapshot, and this comes directly from our end-of-year report that we just filed. This was calculated using our FY24 Brockton Public School actuals and our COB Schedule 19 budgeted and actuals, as well as we do have items that are approved by DESI. So, our school finance regulations do require that you meet a certain amount of net school spending, a local minimum every year. And so, as of our FY24 end-of-year report, when we look at what we spent last year and what we should have spent last year, that is where we get our net school spending carryover. So, that basically says that, you know, we should have spent a little bit more on our students last year, which we all know, we were trying our best to kind of tighten the purse strings and make sure we were in a better financial position. However, we are required to spend a certain amount of money on our students every year, and that has now resulted in the net school spending carryover that we will see into this coming year. So, you'll see right there that it says that our required net school spending was 295 million, and so, but our actual net school spending, if you look at line 28, was 288 million. So, that leads us to that bottom-line number that you see right there that says that our carryover amount is 7,229,177 dollars. So, this is what we've come to in collaboration with the city. We have worked with DOR and they have also approved this number. So, DESI and DOR have approved this number, and they're just kind of waiting on this evening in order to ensure that we can move forward with this, with the journal entry tomorrow. And based on what Mass General Law says, this money would actually be available to us tomorrow without any further appropriation by the city. So, it would just come right back into a journal entry into our budget. And so, again, we'll do a deeper dive into the actual Schedule 19 and how you got to the, we got to these numbers at our next meeting when Patricia Boyer can be present. But we do also have our CFO from the city here tonight who can also speak to this as well. But this is a number I'm comfortable with. Again, I think it demonstrates progress that we've made. And while we do believe that there is further progress to be made in the future, again, we recognize that this is incremental steps forward over time. I'm not dissolve. I know that's very short.
I will open the floor up to any members within question. Mr. Gomes.
Thank you for that. Just a request for those at home and people that might want to learn more about that. Can you explain what the Schedule 19 means and what it entails?
Absolutely. And am I, am I good? Oh, yes. So, absolutely. So, Schedule 19 is basically how we calculate what expenses we sort of pay back to the city. So, you know, when you are in a school district and you are in a municipality, obviously, you know, everybody in Brockton, when they get their paychecks, they're coming from the city of Brockton. You know, we are City of Brockton employees, so we are part of a larger system. We are part of the City of Brockton, which means that we have a certain amount of costs that we have to offset from City Hall because they put out the initial expenditure, and so we are kind of almost reimbursing them for their costs. And there are many different ways you can calculate Schedule 19 and other places. In the past, I've called them charge-backs. And basically, what you're doing is you're sort of going through your finances and you're determining what are the amounts that need to be charged, that need to be, where we need to provide money out of our budget to the city because they're handling the expenses. So, an example would be health insurance. Our health insurance is processed through the city, and that takes, that takes personnel in order to accommodate that. Obviously, our paychecks come through the city, which means, you know, the Treasurer's Office does that. So, basically, what you're doing is you're kind of figuring out what are all of the expenses that are actually incurred by the city, but that support our students and our staff, and we pay them back to the city.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Sullivan?
Yeah, he had, well, it's gone now with retired persons' pensions, insurances, it was zero all the way across.
So, as for, and this is why I was saying that we would do a deeper dive next time, and perhaps, I don't know, the city CFO could speak to it more deeply. I just wanted to kind of provide you a status update because as far as the actual line items, I would need support from the school CFO to answer specifically. So, what I can let you know, though, is this chart or this table that you see is part of a much larger end-of-year report that has several different tabs, several different backend calculations. So, every line that you're seeing is part of a pivot table that comes from another spreadsheet that has multiple calculations on it, which is why, and I don't actually have that in front of me, which is why I would need Trish or the city CFO to explain.
So, in other words, a lot more than zero? I forget what number it was.
Yes, it was retired employee insurance. Yes, that line is zero, but I wouldn't be able to speak to that, I'm sorry.
It's just more than zero.
Yes, yes. There's all of these backend calculations. Again, this is where I would need the city CFO or the school CFO to weigh in.
Okay.
Do we have any other further questions? Mrs. Sullivan?
Oh, may he, how does he end up first? Okay. Thank you. So, Superintendent, what, do you know what happened last year's net school? Anyway, I know I have it at home, non-net and net. You had the non-net up, right? Or then, you had the net up, yeah?
Yeah, so the required net school spending was 295 million.
For last year?
For last year.
For 23?
For FY24.
24, okay.
We had zero carryover from FY23 going into FY24.
Okay, so these are the last year's numbers. Okay.
Right, correct.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor Sullivan?
I just want to thank you, Doctor. You know, I also want to publicly thank DOR and DESI, Jay Sullivan at DESI and Sean Cronin at DOR, and the Vice Chair, myself, Dr. Tealiani, Troy Clarkson, Trish, you've heard this all before, Moses Rodriguez as capacity is president, Megan Bridges, Sarah Spatterford. We've been working with the state now for well over a year, and so, DOR and DESI have been key partners in this. I think what Doctor just said is, you know, is really important because we have truly made progress. Probably not as quick as a lot of us want, but that's okay. We're making progress. And the ultimate goal is to make sure that the students get what they desire, but also the staff, right? So, DOR and DESI, you know, approving these numbers is a really big, big statement because we need to get our tax rate set, we need to get the free cash certified. There's a lot of things that we need to do. When I say we, it's the big we, because we are going to be starting the budget process to both on the school and city side and, you know, collective bargaining and all that stuff. So, I just want to publicly thank them again. We're not out of the woods. We have to keep working with them, but we're trending in the right direction. So, thank you, Doctor. Thank you.
Mr. Vega?
I'm sorry if I misstep. So, we're looking at the spending on that chart and that carryover that you showed. So, that's available to us, just over $7 million.
Will be.
Will be.
Yes.
And that represents unspent funds from previous year. Like, how does so much go unspent?
I mean, I think it was, again, just, I wasn't here, so I'm not exactly sure. But from what I understand, you know, we were trying collectively to make sure that we, you know, tightened the purse strings, didn't overspend, you know, we did make a lot of sacrifices as a result, and so there were things that probably we should have spent, you know, our funds on that we didn't. But this provides us an opportunity to kind of correct that this year, to be able to reinvest in our students. So, there's a number of ways that, you know, the money doesn't get spent. You know, there were some positions that weren't hired, or, you know, again, there were a lot of things that kind of, I think, stopped last year as we tried to get our, you know, get our budget in order. And I think really what it was is, and I know I've talked about this before, the investigation said it, the historical budget wasn't very clear. So, I don't think that we had a collective understanding back then when we're stopping the hiring and we were doing all of these things of what that carryover was going to look like or how much we weren't spending. I think that's part of the problem, right? Is we were trying to get a handle on where's our money, how much do we have, you know, that kind of thing. And so, this is, and then making sure everything is in the appropriate lines, that we are, you know, dissolving the 199, we're putting things where they're supposed to be. So, there are a lot of moving parts, especially as you're still running a school district where you're paying people and money is coming in and going out. And so, I think, you know, this wasn't a function of us trying to like withhold money from students. I think it was a result of just sort of the state of the budget last year, us trying to get a handle on where we were. And in order to do that, we kind of had to wait until the dust settled, until we'd gotten things in, you know, better structure, until we had, you know, paid all of the invoices and things like that to see, okay, where are we? I've always said that, you know, the best kind of budget is a balanced budget. You know, you don't want a deficit, you don't want a surplus. You want to know exactly where your money is, you want to spend exactly how you're going to, you want to plan exactly how you're going to spend it. And then you want to make adjustments as the year goes on because things do inevitably happen, but if you have a good understanding of where your money is, it makes it that much easier to transfer the funds, to make informed decisions. And so, that's what we're striving for in the future, is a balanced budget. But I think this is, I know I've talked about this before, this is sort of a cleanup year. I think this is a result of the cleanup. And I will say it's a good result of a cleanup. It does demonstrate funds that we get to invest into students.
But, you know, in terms of like, on like a home budget, right? So, if I'm at home, I'm working on my budget, my goal is to actually end up with a surplus, right?
Right.
Because I put that away, I put that away, I put that away, I buy a house, I put it away, you know, buy the, but in our case, we want to hit zero. We want to get as close to zero without going under it, right?
Yes, that's how I've always learned it because we get an appropriation from the state that is specifically for our students, and it is calculated based on, you know, the types of students we have, the number of students we have, what their needs are. Then we get a local minimum contribution, again, calculated based on what our students' needs are. So, the goal is that you are spending that money on students. So, it is different than kind of any other kind of budget. In any other kind of budget, yes, a surplus is always a good thing, but we want to make sure that we are expending our resources on students.
Thank you.
Any further questions? I, before I call on any of the members, I know Trish Boyer is not here and TJ is not here. I did have a meeting with TJ and Mr. Clarkson isn't here. I'm having a difficult time here trying to understand this at this point, and I want to know how we, how did we come to this 7.3 million? Because from our city side business administrator and also Open Architects, they gave me a number of 8.4 million. So, I'm trying to understand how is it a 1.1 million dollar difference that we came to this number? I don't know if Mr. Clarkson can have any answers to answer to how we got to this 7.3? And I know Mr. Plant or Trish is not here, but, you know, if somebody tells me 8.4, now we're at 7.3, where's that 1 million dollar difference come from?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Happy to answer that question. Troy Clarkson, Chief Financial Officer. I think in response to the question, it's important at the outset to establish an unequivocal fact that there isn't, because I know that our discussions tend to be highly charged, and so I want to make it clear, we're not talking about a million dollars that went away or went somewhere or that's missing. Open Architects and the City Finance Office and the School Finance Office throughout the year, as you know, track the spending very closely. When this year ended and we began working together on things like the end-of-year report, the city provided significant assistance, a level of assistance and working together that had not occurred previously. And so, for instance, just last week, I spent, we spent a long time, over an hour, a couple hours probably, on a call going through line by line, page by page, on the calculation for the Schedule 19 that had been developed by the Brockton Public Schools and the figures that were then provided by the city to the Brockton Public Schools for these year-end reports. We then, as a group, went through each category because the Superintendent is absolutely correct, there are several ways to calculate this. The way it's typically been done here is there's a formula based on the overall percentage of the school budget of overall city spending, and then that percentage is applied, as the Superintendent was stating, to the different offices for the support that the city provides. We know, although that's an appropriate and legal way to do it, the actual support that the city provides varies based on the office, right? My office provides much more support than animal control. So, I think we have an opportunity in the future, and I know this is a long-winded answer to your question, but I think the public should understand how we got to these figures and the amount of work that actually went into it. So, one of the things that we can do is develop a better methodology for coming up with that Schedule 19 and really looking at the level of support that's provided by my office, by the law office, by the auditing office, as opposed to, Mr. Vice Chair, you've raised on several occasions, the Parks and Rec Department and what services they provide and whether or not you think that's appropriate. So, there's lots of work that we can and should do together to make those figures more collaborative in the future. But in the interest of having a figure, we actually took the formula in the spreadsheet that's been used for many, many years and tried to improve on it. And that's the work that's gone in to this process over the last several weeks. So, based on those discussions, the School Finance Office, the Trish Boyer, then took the, our consensus figures and then entered them into the DESI spreadsheet. And DESI, and I want to make this clear, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has formulas built into their spreadsheet that weight certain expenses more than others. And so, the number, the final number of this 7,229,000 is based on the spreadsheet that DESI requires us to use, and it weights certain expenses. And so, I can unequivocally say that the numbers behind those numbers are numbers that, as far as I know, everyone involved, the Superintendent, the School Business Office, the City Auditing Office, my office, the Mayor's Office, all agree. And so, this is an instance where there aren't any sides to this equation. This is a consensus number that was developed collaboratively, but the final number is based on how the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education calculates what those expenses mean. And so, we often in our work have draft figures. I mean, the city's free cash number has varied by several million dollars over the last several months, not because people didn't know what they were talking about, but because the way the numbers are calculated and how they're counted and constantly changes. And so, this represents, I would submit to the school committee members and the public watching, the best and most accurate number we have and have had, and it represents a level of cooperation that we haven't seen. And so, I stand behind this number and I believe that it represents the best effort of everyone involved.
Can you give me, thank you, can you give me like an example of how that formula is calculated? You know, I'm in those conversations and, you know, we were on a Zoom where it's hard for me to agree to a 7.3 when I have the business administrator for the school department telling me it's 8.4. When we had conversations with DESI and they were around the 8 million dollar number, and you had Open Architects that works for the school district as a contractor, and they were sent here by DESI and the state to help us financially. So, and I know Mr. Plant is not here to allude to that, but I am confident that that 7.3 is actually around the 8 million dollar mark.
I will respectfully, I will respectfully but vehemently disagree with you, Mr. Vice Chair, because the numbers that have been quoted throughout the process were estimates. What I just said, and I'll stand behind, is that this number is one that Open Architects and TJ and I, and I won't speak for Trish Boyer, but she is the one that entered these numbers. And so, this number represents, and obviously, I'm not challenging your ability to disagree, but what I'm providing you with is hard evidence that every professional involved in this dynamic agrees that this is the accurate number. And so, yes, other numbers have been shared throughout the process. I can tell you, the number was during this process was as low as 4 million in the city. And this is critically important, I think, for all of the school committee members to understand, because based on how the Schedule 19 was being calculated, that number declined during this process by several million dollars. We didn't come to a school committee and discuss it and create conflict because we were trying to work together to reach a consensus. But I can tell you that what the city did when we realized that number might be much lower, we rolled up our sleeves, we worked together, and we, my team and I spent hours working on this to try to maximize every penny going back to the schools. Let me repeat that. My team and I rolled up our sleeves and spent hours trying to maximize the money to be available to the Brockton Public Schools. So, I want to dispel all the myths and the rumors and the invective that flies out there these days and assure this school committee and everyone watching that we are dedicated to providing every penny for the schools so that you can provide them to the students here. But we have to do it within the paradigm and the construct provided by DESI. And this number, every professional involved in this process, from our paid consultants to our paid employees, believes that this is an accurate number.
You know, again, when I look at the numbers, it was at 10 million at one point, it was at 6 million at one point, it was at 2 million at one point. And it was very frustrating. I told you it was frustrating. It's just like, how are we coming up with these formulas and what are we getting charged for? Because it's had a notion of that we were just picking numbers out of a hat. It's just like, how can we go from 2 million to one day to 10 million to 6 million? It'd be something different if it was like, okay, we're at 2 million and it's increasing gradually, but not jumping from number to number. You know, it, you know, it's unfortunate that our business administrator, TJ Plant, is not here to answer some of these questions, but I will yield to my colleagues, because I'm in those spaces when we have these conversations and when it deals with finances. Mr. Gomes?
Thank you. I'm going to ask a few, it'll just be direct questions. I remember when I first joined this committee and we had a retreat and we were meeting with yourself, TJ Plant was there as well, and we were questioning the Schedule 19. That's when it first came up. And I recall asking about it, and you did mention that there was a formula that was implemented, has been used for years, that nobody knew exactly what the formula is. Do we now know that formula?
You can certainly go back and check the tape.
Yes.
I don't think I said that nobody knows what the formula is. What I likely said...
Sorry to interrupt. I did ask, how do we calculate the Schedule 19? There was no answer. I would like to know if now we know how we calculate in Schedule 19.
So, I'm going to challenge the premise of your question, but I will say that we did have discussions about the Schedule 19, and I probably, I believe what I said was that it was a school-developed project and the city was not involved with the development of the Schedule 19. But the formulas that were used were based on a spreadsheet and calculated the city's actual costs, and then they plugged them into that Excel spreadsheet based on the formula that I discussed earlier, and the number for FY24 was slightly over 40%. So, the answer to your question is yes, we know the formula, but I don't believe that this formula is the best way to calculate that. And there are several different ways that the Schedule 19 can be calculated and negotiated. I know the city solicitor has put many hours into a proposal that, where we come up with a negotiated agreement so that it's not as laborious as it has been. I'm sure the school's attorney can provide you with information on that. So, I think what, the consensus that we've developed is the best effort that we have in the interest of accuracy and time at this point. But I think the Superintendent is absolutely correct, there's lots more work we need to do to simplify this process so that it's not as contentious as it unfortunately has been these last several months, because it doesn't need to be. And it's based on, it's based on quantitative data, it's based on actual dollar spending. So, we can and should develop a system that takes the politics out of this because the, everyone's interest, I believe, is in being accurate and maximizing the benefit for the schools.
Thank you. I do recall the meeting, and I did request to see like how we calculate that because TJ couldn't get access to Schedule 19 at the time, and I have scrambled notes of all my questions and answers. So, now we, because the goal is to move forward. So, my main thing was, do we now know how we're calculating that? And according to you, yes. I would love to see the spreadsheet that shows how we calculate the Schedule 19. And the other thing too, just for clarification, you can correct me if I'm wrong, TJ had mentioned that basically what happens with Schedule 19 is the city provides it to the school. It's basically a charge of the services that the city anticipates providing to the school district. And then we go, you know, we negotiate, we do the agreement, yes, this amount sounds reasonable, all these services look okay, boom. And that's what I was under the impression that takes place with the Schedule 19. But I would love to see the formula and see how, understand how we calculate the Schedule 19. When my colleague, Chair of the Subcommittee, asked about the difference from 8.4 to 7.3, you started by mentioning that there were services and time spent, especially towards the end of the fiscal year, working with our new Superintendent, Trish and TJ to get the numbers and everything correct. Just for clarification, was that referring to, are you trying to say that... Just for clarification, was that referring to, are you trying to say that the time and effort and the labor put in account for the difference? Or was that just a reference that you guys were working-
No, not at all. Not at all. We would not. And I don't believe that the, the current formulas don't contemplate the variation in effort. So if we spent, if I spent 50 hours in one week on school issues, then we wouldn't seek to change the Schedule 19 based on that. It's based on an annual amount of effort. And again, the formula that's used right now is a function of the entirety of the school budget as it relates to the entirety of the city budget. But what we did in that meeting was go back and look at each office. And whether or not, for instance, in the existing formula, and it was, I know I've said this several times, but I want to repeat it because it's in, it's in contrast to something that you just said. The existing formula was not developed by the city. It was developed by the schools many, many years ago. And that formula actually had the Human Resource Office as an anomaly. And where most of them were being calculated at 40%, the Human Resource Office was being calculated, I think it was at 75. Now, I would say that based on my just knowledge of the efforts of the Human Resource Department of the city, it's definitely more than 40, right? Because the Human Resource Office handles all benefits. The city Human Resource Office handles employee benefits for school and city employees. So it is not likely, it's certainly factual, that that office spends more than 40% of their time on school issues. So that's the level of granular detail that we get into in trying to change some of those numbers so that we could bring that number up, bring that number up from some number far below 7.2 million dollars to where it is now.
Just a point of information from that meeting as well. Your answer to me was that we had a consulting company do the breakdown of the Schedule 19, like the calculation.
No, no. What I said was the city hired a consultant to do a breakdown for the administrative reimbursement for our enterprise funds. And that we could do something similar for this. But what I, when I mentioned that, that was, I was trying to give you an example of how some of those details are accounted for on the city side. And it's a similar, not identical, but a similar process for the enterprise funds where the city actually charges the water department and the sewer department and the refuse department for all of the services that we provide them. So they in turn pay the city approximately $5 million a year for all of those services. So I think what I was talking about that night was demonstrating that we do have tools available to us to calculate those numbers accurately.
And then just a few more questions. I'll let someone else ask some questions as well. This could be the, towards you or our superintendent. How are we calculating the Schedule 19? Is the city and the school coming and saying, these are the services you're gonna provide? These are the estimated cost, and this is how much you anticipate being, and, you know, agree to that amount? Or like, for instance, where is the Schedule 19 from the previous years?
So let me take a stab at that, and then I will certainly defer to the superintendent. The simple answer is no. That has not been the way it's been done. But what I have advocated for at this lectern and over in City Hall and to anyone who will listen is, we need to do a better, more collaborative job of moving forward in the future. And that's what I was just discussing. There are other different ways for this to be calculated. So no, at the beginning of the year, we did not have a discussion and set out what services would be provided and what they would cost. And honestly, that's really probably not the best way to do it because you never know what that's gonna be. And so what I am advocating for is some sort of MOU between the city and the schools where we have an agreed-to, either a hard number or a specific formula that's agreed to before the year starts so that everyone knows the rules of the game and that there's no contention when the number is finally developed.
You wanna add anything?
Yes. So at our next meeting, we will actually bring the actual Schedule 19 and go through the backend numbers so that you can see where they came from. And there was, you know, sort of a back and forth conversation of, okay, you know, this amount was allotted for DPW, but we have our own, you know, grounds department. And so like, there was a sort of a back and forth of what we thought the spending should be. And then, as the CFO mentions, as we move forward, you know, we will base it on more actual numbers as we kind of track these numbers better. But we will drill into those actual numbers so that you guys can even have those questions about, why are we paying for, because that is the process that we went through. Why are we paying for this? Why are we paying for this? Or, you know, this is the percentage we believe we do use. And this is the process that cities and schools go through. It is, you know, a typical kind of back and forth of sort of making our case for who's doing what. And so we'll bring those numbers so you can kind of see. And there is still an opportunity, if we need to amend the end-of-year report or do something like that, we certainly could. But I think one of the things that I, the reason I was anxious to get this in front of you is because the 7.2 amount is an actual number that we could get tomorrow so that we have those funds and we have the year to kind of, and I'll bring to you the next time we meet, sort of, here's how we plan to spend it, or here's what our thinking is so that you can weigh in on that as well. And then if we were to come to some different amount later, whether it be this year or in future years, that could certainly be something that we do. But at least now, we have this kind of initial number that we agree to.
Just a quick follow-up, because you did answer a question. I would love to see how we're gonna spend the money. But then my question, one of the questions I had is, when are we gonna get that 7.2?
So if we were to be okay with that today, that would be a journal entry that they would be able to do tomorrow.
And then those funds would be available to us.
Right. Which is why it was important to get it in front of you all today versus waiting until the December 3 meeting. Certainly, we should still have this discussion. It should be a discussion that includes the school committee and that we do drill down into those numbers more deeply so you can see where they come from, so the community can see where they come from. But for now, you know, that it is, because like Dr. Clarkson said, we have gone back and forth. And there have been moments where it was on a much lower, you know, set of numbers. So we are certainly happy to at least be in the place that we're in now, knowing that it's not the perfect place, not maybe the place that we wanted to be, maybe not the place we want to be next year. But it definitely demonstrates a collective effort and it demonstrates, you know, an investment that can be made immediately for students.
Thank you. All the rest.
So just one more point. So the report calculated the Schedule 19 that got to the 7.3. But the actual munis balance shows 8.4. So like, that has to be, there's a gap there. But, and I know our finance people and TJ's not here. The committee, the body, the public needs to know that munis is where, is the function of where we spend our money. So if we entered this report into, to calculate in the Schedule 19 that brings it to 7.3, it should, correct me if I'm wrong, it should show what's where the differences of the, just a little bit over a million dollars, correct?
So, yeah, and I understand that TJ and Trish aren't here, but I would respectfully suggest that I'm fully qualified to answer these questions to you. And again, what is being, the superintendent presented to you on the screen aren't Troy's numbers, right? Those are the consensus numbers that Open Architects and your own school finance person, who entered these numbers into this spreadsheet and the city. And you just heard from your superintendent. So all of the professionals on this team agree that that's the right number. Now, yes, there have been, and I think this is a good time to talk about how we sort of, and not just you, Mr. Vice Chair, but all of us, toss numbers around. Yes, there are munis reports that show that the surplus at one point was 8.4. But even in munis, because of the way that those numbers are calculated and how we look at what numbers, or what the city's effort was in supporting the schools, that the amount available to the schools has fluctuated significantly. Because in that report, it didn't demonstrate the money that was spent by the city to support the schools. And so I think this is instructive for all of us, right? When you come here and when we talk about numbers that aren't final, it's important to have a disclaimer that those numbers are subject to change. So we often share draft figures in the interest of transparency and good government with you. But I think we all need to understand that until a number is final, it isn't final. And so I think the language that all of us use is really important. And so, yes, we can say, yes, absolutely, we have reports that show us that the difference between the appropriation and what was spent was 8.4 million dollars. But that doesn't mean that the difference between 7.2 and 8.4 is a million two that's somehow missing or that, you know, that the city has the money now. Because in calculating, now, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts in calculating what money is and should be available to the Brockton Public Schools based on their formula and our consensus about the money that the city spent directly benefiting the schools, including tens of millions of dollars in health insurance premiums, that the final number that should be available to the schools is 7.2 million dollars. So nobody is questioning that at one point in the process, we're looking at a figure that might have been 8.4. But as I said a few minutes ago, that number has varied as high as 10 million and as low as 4 million. And so I'm just suggesting, when every professional involved agrees, even as the superintendent said, our auditing staff reviewed these numbers with the DOR today so that we could come before you and say, everybody agrees to this number. This is the number we should go with.
My opinion, I disagree total hardly because we don't have our financial people here. So, Mrs. Oliver.
The issue is, this is how we get into issues when we have munis numbers not adding up. And this is how we got into problems in the past, right?
No, I would disagree with that.
Okay. The problem is, I want to know if we can have all the past Schedule 19 formula, how we did in the past, and how DESI and DOR, how they were adding up the numbers and we were getting different numbers to us. I want that report. On the next meeting, I want that report. I'm sorry, I have a hard time believing anything that's coming from you. My opinion.
Mr. Chair?
My opinion.
Mr. Chair.
She has the floor.
I would like all the report that was coming from DESI and the DOR that was giving different numbers. And the problem is, we keep putting different numbers in the munis, and this is why we got into the problems that we got in the past. So we need to have the real numbers in munis. That is what we requested moving forward after the investigation. This whole body want, what's the real funds in there? We don't want different funds, different money, different anything in there. What has to be in real time? So I want those reports, and that's what I'm asking. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, may I please respond?
Mr. Clarkson.
First of all, let me say again-
Dr. Clarkson, sorry, my apologies.
Let me say again that there are no different numbers that have been in munis. And that the numbers, in the past Schedule 19s and end-of-year reports are available today. They're public. They're available on the DESI website. So there is no information that's not available to every member of this school committee or any member of the public. But I would like to specifically address something that the member said because it's important to me. You know, I've worked as a public administrator for more than 30 years now. And I find it unfortunate to have my integrity challenged when there is absolutely no evidence or any testimony to the contrary. In fact, since this deficit has been revealed, I have worked tirelessly and countless hours and have conducted myself, I believe, with the highest level of respect and decorum. And I find it unfortunate to be challenged on a continual basis by members of this school committee with absolutely no basis in support. So I would just ask, I would plead respectfully as a human being that we stick to the work that we're trying to do together and refrain from personal attacks because it's something I have never engaged in, and I simply don't appreciate it.
That's duly noted, but I don't think anybody's personally attacking. Everybody is frustrated here. And I've taken out some frustration on you numerous times. But you're not the only financial person that works in this city. But at the same token is that the individuals that were charged with the finances of the school district no longer work for the school district for a very long time. And those charges were under your control. So that's where some of that frustration is. And I know sometimes that people bring out that frustration in public. But as elected officials and somebody that's in charge of all the city finances, we all have emails and phone numbers that some of these members that don't have the same ability of meeting with you one-on-one as we do, they can get that information offline so they can get a clearer picture of what's actually happening with school finances. So that's duly noted on your personal feelings on that. So, any members, Mr. Vega.
First of all, the vice chair reminded me, you are Dr. Clarkson. I want to, this is my first time to publicly congratulate you.
Thank you.
We are an educational body, and you've achieved academic black belt. So that's to be noted, and yeah, it's to be celebrated. Having said that, you know, as we talk and to the point that, you know, Dr. Clarkson brought up, I'll just say, you know, I wasn't here for the previous Schedule 19 conversations. I joined in April. I think that Dr. Clarkson is right. I think that if we're gonna get anything done, and I will speak for myself. There have been some meetings, both here in the school committee and recently at the city council, where there were moments where I thought there were some wildly inappropriate things said and done. I think the majority of our colleagues over at city council work with a certain level of decorum that, you know, but nonetheless, I've seen moments where I can't believe, and I'm appalled. Having said that, it's not our job to retaliate. It's our job if, to demonstrate, you know, what it can look like, right, to work collaboratively. I think when we're talking about stuff like Schedule 19, what's clear to me after this conversation is that it needs to be a regular item on the finance, the school finance subcommittee agenda. It needs to be publicly discussed, formula, you know, a presentation on how formulas are done and how calculated. And also, we need to publicly say, these are estimates. And when we see a wild deviation from a 10 million to a 2 million, be able to explain to the public why that estimate changed. But I think that can all be done within the bounds of decorum as well. So I was just, you know, and again, I'm not pointing to anybody on this committee. I'm not pointing to anybody on the city council. But I think both bodies have been abundantly guilty of it. And I said when I first came on, I joined the committee because I didn't like what I was seeing on the committee. So I'll say that once more and say that the buck stops with Dr. Clarkson. That is 100% true. Dr. Clarkson, in his role, should expect difficult questions, challenging questions. But nobody should expect to have their basic integrity questioned. So, yeah, so that's it. I have questions. You mentioned both the DESI formula and then a formula that was created in partnership with the school district some time ago. When does one get used and when does the other get used in figuring out Schedule 19?
So, good question. I think the, first, well, we'll go back to this, what I'll call the city. But I mean, the city is an overall body, right? Both 45 School Street and the school department. And so that formula just serves to calculate what the city's contribution is to the school department. So it looks at stuff, we actually, in this time around, we actually had our health insurance consultant go and actually calculate, not an estimate, but looked at employees and actual school employees and how much we were spending on their health insurance, right? And so that number gets plugged into the city-side spreadsheet that then really just spits out raw numbers. If you take, this is just an example. It's not real numbers. But if you take salaries in the finance office were a million dollars, and we're gonna say 40% of that goes to the schools, then that number that that spreadsheet spits out is $400,000, right? And so then, the school finance office takes those numbers as the city's contribution and then enters them into the DESI spreadsheet. and then enters them into the DESI spreadsheet that the superintendent showed you on that slide. And then what, and I will tell you, as someone who is not a school finance official, but what I know to be true is, DESI then weights those, based on whatever criteria they use, weights those numbers and then develops the overall, that bottom line number as to whether or not we're in. Most of the time, that number is designed to develop a yes or no answer to one simple question, is the municipality meeting its net school spending, right? Most of the time, in fact, this is based on my belief, this is the first time ever here in Brockton that this has happened, if not, it's been a very rarity, right? So we're not usually having this discussion about what the result is and how much money you're getting back. Usually the question is, is the municipality meeting its mandate to provide educational funding? And so the spreadsheet is designed to answer that yes or no question. If the answer is no, by the way, then the mayor gets a not-nice letter from DESI and says that you're not meeting your obligation, you need to do it. In my six years here, that happened once, but it was actually because DESI had incomplete information and they didn't have all the information. So, and every year that I've worked here, the city has met or exceeded its net school spending number. And obviously, in this formula, that's occurring. The year previously, obviously, it was exceeded by a number in the multiple millions. So the first spreadsheet is the one that I think we can work on because it doesn't have to be a formula. It can be a negotiated number or a consensus about what it should be. And that's, I think the idea of having a regular agenda item to discuss this is a marvelous idea because it keeps it out in the light of day, it allows us to have these conversations, it allows us frankly, to disagree respectfully, because that's what these bodies are designed to do, right? And so I think all of us and the public will have a better handle on this if we work on this together in a public forum.
And as a follow-up, you mentioned the DOR earlier. Do these spreadsheets get certified with them? You know, like, do they do a smell check on them?
Answer, the second question on the smell check, yes. I don't believe that they actually certify the net school spending calculation, although it is part of our overall filing for what we call the balance sheet. Because all, in the city's annual filing is multiple different, they're not really spreadsheets because it's based on, the Commonwealth has a software that they use called Gateway. But there are pages and pages and pages of data that we enter on an annual basis that are then carefully reviewed by the Department of Revenue. And I can tell you, at my request and the mayor's request, our team over at City Hall has worked closely with the DOR throughout this process. So this isn't a case, and in smaller communities, there'll be very minimal communication and at the end of the year, the town will just enter their information, they'll have a meeting and it'll be fine. Because we spend a half a billion dollars a year and because of the complexities of what's happened in the last couple of years, my team has maintained constant contact with our DOR representatives, their bosses, and Sean Cronin, whose name you've heard, who's ultimately the person in charge of municipal finance for every city and town in the Commonwealth. So we've kept them in close contact so that when, hopefully tomorrow, we hit send on our final numbers, they're not going to come back with a ton of questions because they've been involved with the development of these figures every step of the way.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Any follow-up questions from any of the members? Is Joyce, Joyce is here? Yeah, nobody? Chairman.
Just saying to school committee member, he's like, I think we have to come up with a better way so we can sit at the table with the camera. So I just, if we could, I want the money to be ledged over tomorrow. I just, I've never experienced this, I'm not a financial guy. How does that work if doctor or doc, hey, the two doctors could just explain to us, how does it work if it's approved? How does that work? Just so the public can know, because I don't know. Do you know? Nobody knows. I hope you two do.
Yeah, I mean, that's a, it's a good question, Mayor. That's a simple function of accounting, right? It is an accounting mechanism that just, I mean, it's not like a bank, right? I mean, Priya's not going to come over to City Hall tomorrow morning and make a withdrawal of 7.2 million.
The money's not getting wired over or any of that stuff.
No. It's a ledger entry on a piece of paper. You know, the city has, thank God, sufficient cash flow, we have healthy cash flow because of the work of Marty Brophy and his team. So if by chance, and I don't suspect this is the case, there was an issue or an initiative for which the superintendent wanted to spend $7 million tomorrow, she could, but I'm guessing that there's going to be some deliberation amongst the school committee about what the priorities are and how that's money is going to be spent. But I can assure you, it will be made available immediately.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Any follow-up questions? Mr. Gomes.
I have a follow-up. It's in regards to this as well, but for different funds. Is that okay to ask? I know we had the revolving account, they had some funds and ended the year, the funds were all taken to do all the accounting process and so on. When are we getting those funds? Or how long is it going to take to get those funds?
So there are a couple of different issues there and I want to make sure we're not conflating them. There were the issue of some school revolving accounts. And I certainly don't want to relitigate the past, but I think it's instructive because there was an honest difference of opinion between our staff about what guidance was sought and what guidance was given. But we were able to resolve that and make, as part of this overall calculation, those revolving funds are not being held by the city and are available to the schools. There were some other issues about some grant funding and the city accounting team believes that they had direction from the Department of Revenue to sweep those old grants. DESI may disagree. So that's one of those things that the superintendent was just discussing, that if, as we proceed, if there are changes to some numbers based on guidance from DESI and DOR and whether or not they need to reconcile their positions, then these numbers could change and more, or very unlikely less, but it's possible that more funds could be made available.
I'm still being clear, so the funds from the revolving account are not available to the school or they are available?
No, they are available to the schools.
So we do have those funds available?
So those revolving accounts, yes, were returned back to the school.
Okay, perfect. All right, thank you.
Any follow-up questions from any members? Thank you, Dr. Clarkson.
Thank you.
I know we sit on quite a few of these finance calls with the state. And I believe our next finance meeting will be on December 3, where we'll have, everybody will have a more detailed presentation of what Schedule 19 looks at, looks like and what those charges are and what the committee agrees that should be charged. And, you know, it's come to a point where, you know, I kind of like throw my hands up and get frustrated in these meetings and say, you know what, send that Schedule 19 right to DESI and let them tell us what the city should be charging us and not charging us. Because if, you know, we're not working together as a team, then I think it needs that outside intervention. But nobody's discrediting your work that you're doing, some people are just frustrated. You know, but thank you for answering our questions this evening.
Thank you. Happy to be here.
With Thanksgiving being next week, I suspect that we'll be having a meeting early December with A&amp;F, Secretary Gorkowitz, Administration of Finance, Lieutenant Governor Kim Driscoll, Sean Cronin from DOR. And as I said before, when we're on these, typically it's the state finance folks, DESI doesn't get on, but when we go into Boston, we meet with everybody. I don't, in forecast, we're going to Beacon Hill before the new year, but I do think we'll be having a Zoom in early December. Thank you.
Thank you. Being said, do we have any other business other than our next scheduled FinCom would be on December 3, 5:30 PM. We'll need about an hour and a half to go through this one because I know there's going to be a lot of questions.
Are we here again?
We're going to be here on, again, yeah, we're here again on December 3. Mr. Vega.
Because everyone may not have been able to tune in to last night's city council finance subcommittee meeting, I just wanted to say, we heard from a number of our colleagues at the city council that both of the presentations that our superintendent shared last night were stellar and of a level that they had not experienced before. So I just wanted to publicly thank you, Dr. Tiaani, for being the face of our school district and for doing so in a way that, you know, earns the acknowledgement of our peers. And, you know, the theme of the, you know, along with the theme of tonight's conversation, I also want to acknowledge that the majority of our colleagues on city council last night leaned into a collaborative discussion, asked hard questions. The majority did so in a wholly appropriate way. And I think, you know, there's an opportunity that opened up last night in that meeting to really begin partnering with certain members, you know, who, yeah, who seemed very excited about the work that you presented. So just want to say thank you for leading the charge, Doctor, and I'm excited to see where the collaboration goes.
Thank you. Any other members? Ms. Sullivan, none? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion was made by Mr. Sullivan, properly seconded by Mr. Sullivan. Show of hands. Adjourn.